Kingsburg Board of Education, which will be held in Bolger Middle School Auditorium. Adequate notice for this meeting has been mailed to the Hasbury Park Press, filed with the Municipal Clerk of Kingsburg, posted on the district website and posted inside the office of the Kingsburg Board of Education, 100 Palmer Place, Kingsburg, New Jersey, on January 4th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizzell?
Here.
Ms. Kellyham Moran?
Here.
Mr. Mankowski?
Here.
Mr. Kitchen?
Here.
Mr. Cook? Mr. Cicliano?
Here.
Mr. Hoff?
Here.
Ms. Ferraro?
Please take note of the emergency exits in case of emergency, the way you came in behind us, and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a new Bolger representative, Ms. Emily Reyes. If you'd like to give your student representative a report now.
Good evening, everyone. These are the current happenings at Joseph R. Bolger Middle School, September 2023. Everyone was very excited to start their new school year. Next week is back-to-school night on September 26th, 2023, Tuesday. We are anticipating a nice turnout to the new school year. The after-school cab program has begun, and we encourage students to join. The cross-country coaches, Mrs. Leantonio and Mrs. Lee, have begun practices for the team. The first meet was held today against Ranny. Last week, Mr. Kamak held an interest meeting for any student who would like to participate in the new Bolger Fitness Club. The rules and terms and conditions were explained to them, and students can't wait to begin this new and exciting club. We have started the school spiritware again this year. All the information is on the form sent home to the students regarding sizes, items to purchase, and prices. Deadline for all forms and money due to Miss Simic by October 4th, 2023. There is an opportunity for any eighth-grade student who is interested in attending an out-of-school, out-of-district high school next year to attend mandatory open houses for that particular school. If interested, they can go to Bolger's guidance counselor, and Mrs. Kohler will give them more information. These are the schools. St. John Vianney, Red Band Catholic, Trinity Hall, and Christian Academy Brothers, or Christian Brothers Academy, sorry. MAST, the Marine Academy of Science and Technology on Sandy Hook, High Technology on the Brookdale campus in Linkroft, Allied Health and Science in Neptune, Communications in Wall, Biotechnology and Freehold. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. It's a fantastic job, natural. Next up, we have the presentation of the strategic planning by Mary Ann Friedman, our field representative from the School Board Association.
Good evening, everybody. I don't think it's on. No, this isn't on either, though. No, this microphone. Okay. Hello? Can everybody hear me? I think it is coming, it's coming through now, right? Okay. Hi, my name is Mary Ann Friedman. I'm the Field Service Representative for Monmouth and Ocean Counties from New Jersey School Boards Association. And back earlier this year, the board contracted with New Jersey School Boards to facilitate their strategic planning process. And it's been a wonderful process to have gone through with you all. I was very happy to facilitate it. And I'm gonna quickly go through the process, how we got to where we are tonight. So, the pyramid that you see is the strategic planning pyramid. The information, the commitment of the board goes across the side of the pyramid and also along the bottom. The information was, and the strengths and challenges were taken care of on the first night. The superintendent provided the State of the Schools report. That was the informational piece. And then we broke up into small groups and identified strengths and challenges. And each group came to consensus on the top 10 strengths and challenges. Then we identified common themes among the strengths and challenges. The second meeting was vision and initiatives. We asked people to consider that they had been away from the district for about five years. They come back, they stop at a convenience store. I can't remember if you have a Wawa or not? 7-Eleven? Okay. So you stop, you stop for coffee or for gas someplace, and you go into the store itself, and you see Time Magazine, which, miracle of all miracles, is still in print in five years. I'm not even sure if it's in print right now, to be perfectly honest. So, but I had Time Magazine covers, fake covers for everybody, with Kingsburg schools on the front cover. And the title of the article was "Schools That Succeed." So we asked the small groups to come together and identify different initiatives that they would like to see in the district having happened now in the next five years. And so they came to initiatives, and then they developed a vision statement. And those were, they came to consensus on those in the small groups. They were reported out. And then we developed common themes from those vision and initiatives as well. At the end of the second meeting, we identified the goal areas from the vision and initiatives. And then we developed objectives that night. The third night, we developed goal statements and objectives and some strategies. The superintendent and the administrative team put together and worked on the action plans over the summer. So this is pretty much where we are. State of the Schools report in the presentation was the first night. Strengths and challenges. Developed vision and initiatives on the second night. Goals and objectives the third night. Action plans have been developed now. You have the entire final plan in front of you. And so tonight is the delivery to the board, and it provides a framework for your annual district goal setting and your board goal setting. And I do want to make mention and thank Aileen Lopez and Fidelina Fidi Racanelli. They were our translators for all three nights, and they were fabulous. You had a lot of non-English-speaking parents and community members who were here, and it was so wonderful to see that their voices could be heard through this process. And I know that they, they all said that they really appreciated having that ability to participate. So thank you for that. The planning meetings were held on April 27th. There were 41 people that attended. May 23rd, there were 35 that attended, and June 12th, 23 attended. And the participants really were Board of Education members, the superintendent, other administrators, teachers, parents, and community members. And they all contributed their time and talent to the success of this plan. Your mission statement is the Kingsburg School District shall graduate students with educational opportunities in college and career readiness. All stakeholders will set rigorous expectations for all students in the classroom, including co-curricular activities, attendance, tardiness, and discipline. And the vision is this Kingsburg School District shall prepare students for life's abundant opportunities in careers, college or careers, in a safe, rigorous, and nurturing educational environment. And thank you again to the translators for translating this PowerPoint as well. So the strategic planning goal areas that were developed on that second night, the end of the second night, were student engagement, community and stakeholder engagement and involvement, climate and culture, health and wellness, and finance and facilities. And the third meeting, everybody worked together, everybody worked on the, on the goal area that they wanted to work on, developed objectives first, and then an overarching goal statement. So for student engagement, the goal is to create a safe and secure learning environment where all students are engaged. Objectives are increased differentiation in the classroom to improve student success and self-direction, explore different schedule options to address attention span and engagement, time on task, foster authentic relationships, student-teacher, student-administrator, teacher-administrator, families administrators, and families and teachers. Increase the number of assemblies to address targeted issues, examples of value of education, behavior, social-emotional learning. And then celebrate academic and behavioral achievements and goals throughout each marking period or semester. SEL Room, the Social Emotional Learning Room, and Student of the Month. The second goal area is community stakeholder engagement and involvement. The goal is the Kingsburg School District will ensure student growth through collaboration with students, families, faculty, staff, and community members to promote the success of all students. The objectives are to promote a greater sense of community for all students and their families, to have families and community members stay in the district, in Kingsburg, and to have family support teams. The third area was climate and culture. The goal is to address challenges through an accountable, consistent, and equitable climate and culture. The objectives were to develop a streamlined and transparent code of conduct to be synergistic throughout the district, celebrate student successes and achievements throughout, through school and community events, increase the dialogue between home and school, fostering positive communication, create a safe and inclusive learning environment for all students and teachers, and increase staff and faculty participation in after-school and extracurricular activities. The fourth goal is health and wellness. The goal statement is the Kingsburg School District will create an inclusive, safe, and learning environment that promotes collaboration between home and school to support the whole learner. The objectives are to increase inclusivity with culture, fitness, and sports, expand mental health for families and students in school and in the community, and apply strategies in the classroom and at home. And the fifth goal area is finance and facilities. And the goal is to strategically use our finances and other resources to upgrade and maintain our facilities, to provide stakeholders a district they can be proud of for years to come. The objectives are furniture upgrades, purchase modern, safe, flexible furniture tailored to the students' diverse learning styles and needs, upgrade athletic facilities to foster pride in Kingsburg Titan Athletics, continue upgrading security to provide a safe environment for students to learn and staff to teach. Continue to apply for and use grants to fund school projects and programs that benefits the students, the staff, and the community of Kingsburg, and find creative ways to budget the district funds to provide an enriching educational experience that Kingsburg can be proud of. So the next steps are the board will review the documents that I've just given to everybody. Every board member has a complete copy of the plan, which includes the action plans. Administra, then you'll adopt the plan probably at your next meeting, so giving you some time to be able to review everything. Administration will implement the plan, and we highly recommend that there are updates on the progress towards the completion of the strategic plan at board meetings. Items on the board agenda may be noted as part of the strategic plan. That there be an annual State of the Strategic Planning Report. So next year, in September of 2024, you can do your first annual State of the Strategic Plan, talk about the things that have been accomplished this past year and what's coming up in '24, '25. And then once the board has approved the plan, the final plan will be posted on the district website. And I'm looking forward to being able to, to provide that to you. I'm also working on translating the entire plan into Spanish, so you'll be able to have a Spanish version on PDF on the website itself. That's gonna take me a little bit of time, but I'm gonna get there, I promise. Okay? So I really want to thank everybody, the board, first of all, for contracting with us to, to do this plan, help you facilitate this plan, and to everybody who participated in the strategic plan. It really is going to improve and accelerate everything in the district. And I look forward to seeing all the great things, in addition to the great things you're already doing, all of the additional great things that will come from this plan. So thank you all so much. Please stay safe and stay healthy. Any questions from the board?
I just want to say thank you for facilitating the meetings and being so easy to work with. We can't help, we can't thank you enough. You know, this is great for the school district. Thank you to everybody, the administrators, staff, fellow board members, and community for coming.
It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Moving on, do we have any committee reports? Seeing none. I'll open it to the public for comments and questions relating the board agenda items only. Seeing none, I'll close that. I'll do an executive. Can I have a motion for the approval of minutes? Brooke, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizzell? Ms. Kellyham Moran?
Yes.
Mr. Mankowski?
I abstain, and I apologize for missing the meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cicliano?
Yes.
Yep.
Superintendent of Schools recommends positive action on the following items. Under Personnel, 1, resignation. 2, professional employment. 3, long-term substitute teacher. 4, transfer professional staff. 5, leave of absence medical. 6, leave of absence maternity childcare. 7, leave of absence maternity childcare revision. 8, substitute teacher's paraprofessional for the district. 9, substitute nurse for the district. 10, student observation. 11, Kingsburg after-school program. 12, after-school Wilson reading teachers. 13, freshman class mentors. 14, esports coaching position. 15, professional development costing $150 or above.
Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Patty was first. Kim will put you second.
Patty. Patty. Kim.
Is there any comments or questions from board members? Mr. Hoff?
Yes, can you use the place to bring the entire number of cards?
Oh, yes. So for a couple of years, we've been trying to bring esports as an after-school activity. So we finally did receive some funding to help us do that. So we're using the SR3 funds. That's what it says right there. And so esports, we have different equipment. I don't know if we, Mr. Brophy, did we order the equipment yet? Do, is it here? Yes. So the equipment has arrived that will be doing an after-school esports video gaming club.
That's awesome.
We thought it was a great opportunity, because we have some kids that aren't gonna do athletics, but this is another great way for them to get involved.
This will be done where? At a certain location, right? TVs and TVs and computer monitors as a part of the club?
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Was that it, Mr. Hoff?
Yeah, I don't have it.
We'll have to play one day. Seeing none, I guess it's a roll call, though.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizzell? Ms. Kellyham Moran? Mr. Mankowski?
Yes, so we're abstaining on the second name on number 12.
Second name, number 12?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cicliano?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Under General, number 16, HIB Self-Assessment for the District. 17, 23-24 Sure Conference Free Schedule. 18, Acceptance of Donation of Supplies for Joseph C. Caruso School. That one was from Whole Foods in Middletown. And 19, Acceptance of Backpack Donation from the Hazlitt College.
Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Kim.
Kim.
Do I have a second? Patty, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Hoff?
Yes, we, relations from 18 to 19, can we send them in?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I told him to change.
Yes.
What was it from our Costco? Just write that, Whole Foods?
It's a carpool school supplies. If we want to work, we'll contact the company donating.
I'll shoot it. Thanks.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, school self-assessment? On, for the Keenworth Early Learning Center. Under the indicators, I see if out of a possible score of nine, you can only score a four?
So it's a self-assessment? So that means that's what she assessed herself at? Because she sees it as an area of improvement? Yes. She sees it as a little harder on herself than she needs to be, but it's nice to see that she wants to improve, so.
Any, anyone else? Just want to thank Whole Foods and Costco for, you know, donating to our children. It's fantastic. And roll call, though, please.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizzell? Ms. Kellyham Moran? Mr. Mankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cicliano?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
I have addendum. A1, professional employment. A2, substitute teacher paraprofessional for the district. And adding A3, attendance at school boards conference for the supervisor of security for the conference only.
Do I have a motion to accept?
Want to make a motion?
Thank you. Mr. Mankowski, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cicliano. Any questions, comments? Fellow board members? A3 is for the head of security, supervisor of security, to attend the school boards with us. Seeing no other, I guess roll call.
Okay. Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizzell? Ms. Kellyham Moran? Mr. Mankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cicliano?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes, but I abstained from Alpha 3, A3.
A3? Uh, School Business Administrator Board Secretary's Report. The superintendent of school recommends positive action on the following items. The monthly certification of board secretaries report, payroll certification. Number 1, receipt and acceptance of July 2023 Board Secretaries Report. Number 2, approved appropriation transfers. Number 3, approved bills list. Number 4, approve Monmouth County Vocational Regular Education Students. Number 5, approve Monmouth County Vocational Regular and Special Education Students. Number 6, approval of transportation contract. Number 7, approval of St. Anne's Parking Lease Agreement. Number 8, approval of change orders, 8 through 10, for paving upgrades, Kingsburg High School. Number 9, approve resolution to renew membership in New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. Number 10, approve district food service program pricing for 23-24. Number 11, approve external use hourly rate, premise rate, for 23-24. Number 12, approve food service petty cash for 23-24. 13, approve submission of stabilization aid grant. 14, approve evaluation contract for 21st Century, the CAP program. Number 15, approve Patricia Bennett Group renewals, 23-24. And 16, approve resolution authorizing the Kingsburg Board of Education to apply for late liquidation for SR2 grant funds.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mankowski. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Cicliano. Yeah, Greg. Any questions or comments from fellow board members? Patty, she was first, Mr. Hoff, sorry.
I know I spoke to Mr. Bennett, who departed from the meeting, on a change orders, site and paving upgrades. We had $155,761 in expenses for the paving that were upgrades. I know everything came to like, in the bills list, like $912,000. We were allowed $60,000. We're also allowed like, the 20% leeway on everything. Are we at that 20%? Or, and like, and how come we weren't like, is this something that should have been approved before? We did it instead and after, and how come we weren't told? Because that's a substantial amount of money.
We are under the 20%.
Just, correct?
Uh, yeah, just. And we are under, we are still, you know, it's fully funded by the grant still. The grant that we originally applied for had more money allocated than the original paving contract came in, you know, subsequently, a year later. So it's all funded through the grant.
So our options were to give that money back to the state or to use it for other paving? That's it? You can't use it for other projects or other things? Because it's granted for, exactly for paving?
Okay, so shouldn't have been done before? Or at least called the board before? Because that's a substantial amount of money to have done already? I mean, I think I talked to you.
Yeah, I'll have to speak up a little bit, you know? I'm an old man, and I'm all the way down here. I can't hear you so well.
I was, I was telling them I was talking to you about the, about being notified, like, us being notified, because that's a substantial amount of money to just approve now, after the work is done.
You can establish a procedure that the, if there's a substantial increase that comes, you have to vote if it's over the 20%. If it's under the 20%, there's not the requirement to vote, but you should, if you want to have a procedure that there's a substantial amount that you want to have the board notified, you just make that your policy, and then it'll be done. So that's, I already spoke to Mike about that as per our conversation, and suggested that in the future, we might want to do that, just so that we avoid any issues, any issues. Just have the notification, and if there's a consensus to have a vote, because it's a lot of money, that's fine. But the law allows you to do the 20%. Whose money it is is not as relevant, because you have a fiduciary responsibility even to administer the amounts of the grants in accordance with the law. But no harm, no foul here. So it was a good catch, and I think that you're saying, at least, that maybe we should just streamline that procedure a little bit in the future. And that's, that'd be so that you would know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Frizzell. Mr. Hoff?
Yes. Under number 4, for the MAST Academy, where we allocate it more slots, like, don't choose students?
So for MAST, they, they want to fill the program. So what happens is if they're not getting enough students from other districts, they take more from other districts.
Really? So, so it would be 1, 2?
The next two years.
We have. Outstanding. So I know we have kids that are sophomores. Do we have sophomores, juniors, and seniors?
Yep. That's accumulation of all four grade levels.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any others? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizzell? Ms. Kellyham Moran? Mr. Mankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cicliano? Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
I, too, have an addendum. BS1, resolution for participating in coordinated transportation services. And BS2 is approval to submit New Jersey Acceleration Program High-Impact Tutoring Grant Application.
Do I have a motion to accept? Thank you, Patty. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike?
Any questions or comments from fellow board members on the addendum? I actually have a question about number 2, just, what exactly is that?
So it's another one of the grants that we're trying to get. So this one specifically is for tutoring, but they'd like it to happen throughout the day. So what we put in for is to bring in contracted tutors that would work in collaboration with the school district and add extra tutoring throughout the day for students.
So it would be like a private company, like ESS? Not saying ESS, but like, individuals?
Yes, like, we could hire a retired teacher to come in and offer some tutoring and things like that. It's a very competitive grant, but we always just try and hope for the best.
That's fantastic.
Now, I have another question. Under, under point 16?
16?
Does it, um?
Oh. Yes. So that's like the HVAC? They, we can't pay until everything's completed. So because the grant closes on September 30th, we have to pay later. So we just have to ask for permission to do that.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, though, please.
Mrs. Clayton? Mrs. Frizzell? Ms. Kellyham Moran? Mr. Mankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Kitchen?
Yes.
Mr. Cicliano?
Yes.
Mr. Hoff?
Yes.
I'm now open to the public for any public comments and questions. Seeing none, close that section. Any older new communications from Board members? Mr. Hoff, would you like to go first?
I do. I'm sorry, um, I haven't seen my facial video here in two months. I happened to be on vacation and it just fell in the, it fell in the times of my required appointment of being here. But no disrespect to the residents of Keansburg. But I feel, I truly believe in my heart that we have the best superintendent in the country so I can take some time off to be with my family. So if there was something emergency, I'm sure someone would have contacted me. Since no one contacted me, we made it through the summer. I'm looking forward to an outstanding year from the high school on down to the little school. I will be at the football games. I will be at everything humanly possible now that school has started. And I believe it's probably going to be one of the best school years ever. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hoff. Patty, you have anything?
Just welcome back, everybody.
Mike, you have anything?
I just want to thank everybody who participated in the strategic planning, from the School Boards, our administration, Board members, staff. I see a lot of people in here, names that we see all the time. I was glad to see a lot of names that I didn't recognize or that are not already at these meetings. So I do appreciate all the effort that everybody put into it and I just hope everybody has a great year.
Brooke, you have anything?
Just welcome back, everybody.
Kim?
I just wanted to say thank you for the enhancement to me to the school when I pulled in. So the doors, they look amazing. And as you can see in the hallway and see how clean and shiny and everything. Just to say thank you, well done. And, um, I look forward to a really good school year.
Greg?
Um, yep, just to piggyback off of everyone, it's, it's great to see so many different names that came to the strategic planning. We're always actively encouraging parents, uh, community members to come to meetings, participate, ask questions, be involved. We'd love to hear what you have to say and see new faces here every time. Other than that, looking forward to a great school year.
I just want to say thank you again to Mary Ann Friedman from the School Board Association for organizing the, the plan. I mean, this is great. This is a five-year plan, right? So it's, you know, we're really, we're trying to think ahead now and trying to plan ahead. Thank you to all our administrators that are here. I mean, I got almost a kid in every school. Drop-off and pickup's been going so smooth, you know? And thank you, I, I don't know who reached out to the police about, you know, the, there's little incidences here and there, but it's fantastic to see the notifications going home to parents, things like that. And that, and any problems being cleared up. So thank you to all the staff, the superintendent and the administration and all staff. Thank you. Seems to be off to a good start. You have anything? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Greg? Uh, that one was quick, guys. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mike?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?